Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Chair Lethin.
Here.
Vice Chair Viasadi is absent. Committee Member Tom Hamilton.
Here.
Committee Member, Planning Commissioner Aros Ensberg-Hartman.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Mary Lou Johnson.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Valentine Morgan.
Here.
You have five members. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Hamilton, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As a reminder, there are agendas and staff reports by the door, and please silence your cell phones and take any calls you get outside. And we'll start with our business items. First is the approval of minutes from December 17th, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. We move on to public comment. I understand that we have one person for public comment, but I'll invite anybody else who'd like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. You can, do we need to submit names?
I have the speaker card.
Okay. You can submit a speaker card.
Yeah.
And be on the list, so I'll invite, I'll invite my, who's the person we have here to speak?
I have Paul Wepensky.
Paul Wepensky.
Sorry.
First off, I'll thank you guys for what you do. Appreciate it. I've got four comments, or four questions and a comment. I've been looking through the website and codes and all that kind of stuff, just kind of familiarizing myself with things. And it seems like a lot of the projects that you guys get exceed the limits, or you know, more than 50% of the house, and I was just wondering, if you keep making exceptions to that, why don't you just change the code so you don't have to go through all this process? Although, I kind of think we should keep it small, keep the thing small. The second question is, is there a completion time for remodels? Every morning when I go out and do my daily run, I see this house that's being built, and it's being built, and it's being built. It seems like it's been going on for over a year, and I just was wondering, is there something in the approval process tells you you have to complete it by a certain time, or is there a time limit that, you know, you could take forever to do that? The other thing is about parking, and I'm not quite sure about the, what the code says for new, for new construction, like for apartments and everything, is it .7 parking spaces per unit? Is that what's?
Okay. Well, right now, we'll take your questions, and then we'll finish.
Because if it's not, it seems like there's more and more people that are living in houses that used to be like a single-family house, or a one-bedroom apartment, that now there's maybe two or three people that are living there because of the cost is so high, and it seems that if it is a .7 limit, it should be a lot higher than that, so that there's more parking spaces that are required to be built for units. And then my last question is, what is the law or the code for San Bruno for affordable housing for new housing units? Or how many, what's the percentage you have to have for new construction? And then my last, my comment is, and I wanted to come in the last meeting, but I couldn't, but this was a meeting before Mr. Morgan made the comments regarding the apartments that are going to be built down by the train station, that the more housing that we build, the cost will come out, and I don't think that applies in this market. I think that the more housing we build, the prices just keep going up. You know, I looked at the aperture apartments, one-bedroom apartments, $300, $400 a month, and I think the more we build, I don't think that price is going to go down. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. I think a couple of your questions would be really well addressed by staff. I know some of it is available online as well. Pamela, maybe you can join me and clarify.
Yeah. Through the chair, if I may.
Yes.
If I may answer some of your questions, and correct me if I'm wrong. Your first question is, many of the projects that a commission have review include as 50% exceeding the allowed limit, and you proposed the code to be updated or to reflect that. Right now, we have the ordinance 1284 in effect, so which allows most of the houses that are either exceeding the 50% or certain threshold to require a conditional use permit. The intent behind that is that so the neighbors could be properly noticed, and also the planning commission, also the architectural review committee, can provide guidance and feedback on the architectural design. And that's definitely a feedback that we can present to city council and also city manager to consider updating the general plan, also the zoning code, should the council have a direction for us to amend that. So that's the first one. The second one, you mentioned if there is a completion time for any remodel project. As far as I understand, I'm looking at my staff to correct me if I'm wrong, once the use permit or any entitlement is granted, the homeowners actually can continue to work on construction so long that there is a process. So they would have to require inspection every so often from the building inspection to make sure the foundation is in place, the wall framing and the roofing, all that. So as long as there's continuous inspection going on, we don't really have a deadline in terms of when the construction has to finish. However, there is a deadline for the entitlement that has to be, to get a building permit, and that time is one year. So for any homeowners who are getting a conditional use permit tonight, if they don't exercise that right by pulling a building permit next January, they have to have to go through this again or get a renewal. But the actual construction can lengthen two years, three years, five years. Sometimes, we understand from the community, there's a bit of a financial difficulty to make it more speedy, and some people just have the construction crew, which can make it easier. So we don't have an exact timeframe.
The reason I asked the question is because if somebody decides to find it, my neighbor's 96 years old, and when she passes on, I'm assuming that somebody will buy the house or whatever, and if they want to build on that house, I could put up with, from what you're telling me, just maybe 10 years unlimited number of trucks being parked out in front of my house, saws going off, people doing whatever. So what I'm just saying is, it just seems like there's a lot of construction projects, especially where I live.
Okay.
That are going on forever, and it just seems like maybe you ought to think about that.
Right. So there is the noise ordinance that we're also administering, and also the construction good practice. So we would not let something that go on forever, and realistically, I hope nobody's taking 10 years to finish a construction. So there will be active monitoring, but it just, we don't have a hard deadline. The third thing you brought up is the parking requirement. So the planning commission actually reviewed the parking update just in December of the planning commission last year. I think what you're referring to is the different parking requirement between single-family residents versus multifamily versus different type of development. The new proposal actually will require multifamily to provide one space for each unit, and depending on where you are, there are times that where you have to provide a fraction of a stall for guest parking. For single-family residents, that they would have to provide new, two off-street parking spaces, and there are different ways to make it tandem or angled, whichever, to make it work. We understand that parking is a high demand in the city, but some of the houses are older, and then when they were built, two-car garage is just a luxury. So we're, staff is trying to modernize the parking chopper by taking consideration of the current condition and also make the parking available for the newer development. And I encourage you to get a copy of the staff report so you can look at that, and this is also going to council for a study session next Tuesday. Yeah, go ahead.
The reason I ask that is mostly for apartments, because when I read an article on SF Gate about the Mills Park project, and the guy's going to come back and he wants to build it without parking, and that really concerns me that if we're going to build a bunch of apartments and there's no place for people to park, then it can create a problem with people trying to park on the streets, and then they're going to go to the deal where people, resident, or I can't remember what they call them, we're going to get the two passes for your cars, and it's just going to create a huge headache, and that's why I wanted to know what the requirement was.
So just, so the commission understand, so I think you're referring to is the Mills project. Last year, city manager provided in his newsletter that there might be a different project coming through. It's what we commonly refer to as the SB 35 project. That is under the state housing law. SB 35 has different regulation that they have to stand by, and they are dramatically different than the city code. If the developer for Mills project does come in and claim this to be a SB 35 project, you're absolutely right. There could be potentially no parking required. This is a state law. But then there are other provisions that they have to meet, higher density, higher affordability, and this and that. So it's kind of comparing apples and oranges. There are certain conditions that the developer has to meet if they are claiming that. And then the next one, I kind of want to go into, so you had a question on affordability. So currently, we do have an affordable housing program in our zoning code. Any new construction would have to provide a minimum of 15% of affordable units. So if you were to provide, propose 100 units, you would have to provide 15 of, 15% of to be affordable. And I would just take your last comment on the development, that more housing does not necessarily means the price will go down. It's a comment, I'm not going to address that.
I think that's, yeah, that's taken as a comment. Yeah. Okay.
I, yes, Commissioner? I was just interested in sort of responding, commenting. I mean, I think in terms of these, the 50% increases, I mean, right, that there are, you know, if you as a homeowner want to do like, you know, repair one wall in your garage or something, right, you just pull a building permit, you don't have to come, you know, get the conditional use, notify people out to 300 feet, you know, right? That the, the reason that you see a lot of projects coming before us from residential that have the 50% is that like, these are more, you know, they're bigger, they're more disruptive, and we're trying to balance the goal of letting people expand their houses, you know, do what they want on their property, with the goal of making sure other neighbors get to comment and know about what's happening. And so, I mean, I think it is, it's like, it is a sort of a routine thing, and maybe we just approve them all, but it is, I think, a helpful process.
And I think also to jump, to chime in on that is, what you're seeing that comes before us is often people that are asking for exceptions to the rule, whereas there are, and correct me if I'm wrong, Pamela, many, many more proportionally that are taking care of directly through planning and building that don't come before us. So, am I correct, Pamela?
That is correct. So we do, so for instance, you're seeing, you're considering two use permits tonight, where we could be issuing two to four building permits today for different remodel, minor revision, and this and that pertaining to the homeowners. And you're absolutely right that the way it's set up right now, it is an exception to the rules. Our zoning code right now has limitation on floor area ratio, lot coverage, total square feet, setback height, even parking requirement. So it's set up in a way that if you're asking for deviation from the standard, this decision-making body, the planning commission, will have authority over that. I have one more correction, if I may, Mr. Wepensky. Staff corrected me that the construction process is pending on the total valuation of that project. For instance, if the total valuation is at $50,000, they would have six months to complete the project. If their total valuation is $10,000, they get additional?
$100,000.
$100,000, they get additional?
Six months.
Six months. So it goes up pending on the total valuation of that contract, of that project. So if they are, your next-door neighbor gets sold, they are doing a $2 million project. Based on that total valuation, the building department will estimate a time for construction.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that you can be available for questions afterwards?
Yes, I can be available. And I'll hand out my card, so if you have any further questions, feel free to.
Just ask one quick question.
A quickie. We have a.
Who monitors that?
The building inspectors.
And is there a penalty for them busting the time limit?
I believe the building inspectors has total jurisdiction over that.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
Just want to make a quick comment. There's also, the economic status is what really affects, affects the building. I have seen where, when economy is booming, it, there's a different process in place, and then when it's really, times are, when economy is, properties are really high, people are then, actually, more building permits come out. So there's a lot of variables that impact the way it's, what we see today isn't really a pattern. It's just the way it happens in different times of whatever's taking place in our community and economy.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, just to circle back, my thought was, I mean, you say, oh, it's an exception to the rules, and it's, I mean, the way I think about it is more, it's like, well, there's sort of a certain threshold of disruption at which the noticing becomes appropriate. And I mean, there are, you know, if somebody was going to try to turn their single-story house into like a seven stories, like, you know, that just wouldn't be permitted, it's outside of the zoning. And so it's, we're talking about expansions that are within reasonable parameters for the type of neighborhoods, you know, it's adding a second story, you know, so you have a two-story house instead of one story. And the other, the other comment was, I don't know how closely you followed the Mills Park Plaza, but the part of the deal of the original plan that ended up failing at the city council vote, the developer had agreed that they were going to provide slightly more parking than what was considered the official minimum, and that residents would not be allowed to participate in the residential parking permit scheme if and when that was implemented. And so, you know, if your neighborhood immediately adjacent to it implemented permits, those people in the apartments, they were going to have to either park in the apartment or not park. And we do have evidence that a fair number of apartment dwellers up and down the peninsula are now using Uber, Zipcar, Transit. So there is actually a good bit of evidence that people living in apartments near Transit own less than one car per unit. And so, I think that version of the project, obviously, the SB 35 is a whole nother story. We'll deal with that if that comes to it. But the original Mills Park plan, I think, did address your concern.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll make my last comment, and then assuming we don't have any others, we'll move on to our agenda items, but, but if SB 35 comes to bear, it's my understanding, and again, Pamela can correct me if I'm wrong, that is outside of our city's hands. This commission does not see any of that. There's no feedback. It goes directly to planning.
That is correct.
For a check to make sure it conforms to the state requirements, and then it goes straight to building. We have, our hands are totally tied by the state.
Through the chair. My last comment. A lot of the 50% projects that go up oftentimes are very small houses. So of course, the 50% sounds huge, but if you look at a house that's 800 or 900 or 1,000 square feet, those are the houses that are coming up for 50%. You don't really see a house that's 2,000 square feet and up that level in size. And when they do, it's been my experience over the years that as a commissioner, we really take that into consideration, look at what's the impact of that to the community, and that's really important. But the quality of life for a very small house in today's world is really important to take a look at as well. And I think as commissioners, it's been my experience that commissioners take a look at that very carefully, and we drill in in some of those areas where we find that it's excessive and impactful to a community.
Thank you, Mary Lou. I appreciate it. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to our meetings, and if you have further questions, again, Pamela's available to help you. Okay. So we'll go ahead and close public comment, and I believe we have an announcement of conflict of interest on one item.
Through the chair, I do have a conflict of interest. I have a property that's one block away.
Okay.
So I'll step out of the room when I have to.
And that is for 4A, Santa Inez?
That's correct.
Okay.
132 Santa Inez, and I'm at 233 Santa Inez.
Okay.
Four lots, though.
Okay. Are there any other recusals for any items? Okay.
No.
Thank you, Mary Lou. So you can just step out of the room when we're ready to start, and I think that means that we're ready to start. So we'll wait for you to go, and we'll call you back. So item 4A is for 132 Santa Inez, and we're ready for the staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair Lethin, planning commissioners, and members of the public. The first project for tonight is 132 Santa Inez. That's use permit 19012. It's a request for a conditional use permit to allow an addition to an existing residence that was built without a covered parking space. The subject lot measures 5,216 square feet and is currently improved with an existing 1,613 square foot, two-story, single-family house without providing any parking, covered parking space. The subject property is located in the middle of the block on Santa Inez Avenue between El Camino Real and San and Selmo Avenue. The architecture review committee reviewed the project at its December 12th, 2019 meeting. The committee forwarded the project to the planning commission for approval as proposed, with a recommendation to provide material and color samples, which the applicant has provided since the meeting. The project description is such that it proposes to demolish a very small storage room in the rear of the house and to construct a 266 square feet addition, which includes a bedroom and a bathroom. If approved and constructed, this would be 1,879 square feet house with four bedrooms, two bathrooms, which provides no covered parking space, and that is why a conditional use permit is required for this project. Any addition greater than 1,800 square feet normally requires, the San Bruno Municipal Code requires two covered parking spaces, although this house does not have any covered parking space. However, based on staff's analysis, we checked if covered parking space could be accommodated in the existing house footprint. However, that was not possible because the house is built out. Although they do have a very deep driveway, that is 40 feet deep and 12 feet wide, which could accommodate two cars, and which is being used by the owner at this point to park his cars, and therefore, staff was of the opinion that the applicant could meet the parking space requirement by parking in the driveway. Overall, the proposed addition does not impact the scale of the property as seen from the street because it, the addition is in the rear of the property, and the exterior finishes match with the existing house, the color matches with the existing house, and also there is no second-story addition. It's just a first-story addition, which does not, which is not visible as seen from the street. Overall, the project as proposed reinforces the prevailing neighborhood development patterns while respecting the scale, bulk, and character of the homes in their adjacent neighborhoods by proposing exterior, consistent exterior materials, as I mentioned earlier. It should also be noted that there are similar house designs in the neighborhood, which does not provide any covered parking space, and that's how these houses were built in like, around like 1940s. So this pattern or this design is, does exist in the neighborhood. Overall, staff finds that the project complies with the basic neighborhood design principles and therefore supports this project and recommends planning commission to approve this project. This concludes my staff presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here tonight with us. If you want to come, come to the podium and say something.
Thank you, Rucha. Quickly, does the commission have any questions for staff about the staff report? No?
A brief one.
Yes.
There was a statement in the packet that runs, "Few properties in the neighborhood that surrounds the subject property share similar architectural building style as it was developed at roughly the same time." And I would have thought that things developed at the same time. I wasn't clear if this was supposed to say, like, many properties share, or some properties share, or whether the implication is that at the time it was developed, there was sort of a wild proliferation of different styles, and so they don't share the similar style. I don't know that it matters to approval, I just, the statement was confusing.
Basically, when we review the projects, we check whether they are compatible with the neighborhood or not, and therefore, that statement was made to prove that it is compatible with the neighborhood because that kind of design can be seen in the neighborhood.
Okay. Redfin, I think, thinks the property actually dates to 1907.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I have comments, but I'd like to wait until after the resident speaks, if he wishes.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Applicant, sorry.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to public hearing. If the applicant is here, would you please come to the podium and share your name and a little bit about your project? The applicant is not here. You were here. Oh, good. Yes, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and just sharing a little bit about your project and what your plans are.
This project is in Santa Inez, 132 Santa Inez, and I was asked by the owner to expand the area because of the growing family and the, and the in-laws that are living with them. Originally, there's a big bedroom only on the upstairs, and they have three kids, and they want more space at the back. So what we did is to create a design that is compatible to the existing house with the same cedar siding shingle, and the roof apex is almost as li, aligned with the roofing of the house. Unfortunately, that we cannot afford any parking in the front because we don't want to ruin the character of the house. The house was built in the early 19, so I don't think it was not, doesn't have any garage in the front, and we don't have any space to create a covered garage. So what we asked is for a conditional use permit so that we can build the additional at the back. And this is good because right now, there is a non-conforming structure at the back, which is not really good-looking, so we're going to replace that with a better-looking annex on the house.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, we'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. Is there anybody here from the public who'd like to speak on the item? No? Okay. Then I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back for commission discussion. Do any commissioners have further questions or points of discussion?
I have one point of discussion through the chair. The staff report indicates that there's two heritage trees on the property. Can we, can we have a provision that the, that the owner take all precautions during construction to protect those trees? I know even, even sometimes when the trees are, you know, well away from the construction area, sometimes, you know, a debris pile will grow or whatever. That happened to me when we expanded my house. I had a, I had a, it wasn't a heritage tree, but I had a tree that was the victim of a collapsed debris pile that was placed next to it. So since these are heritage trees, if some kind of protection can be made for them during construction.
That can be taken care during the building permit. Usually, the protection of trees can be taken care during the building permit, but I will defer to my manager.
I'm looking through the conditions of approval. We could do two things. We could definitely add a note on the building permit comment. We could also add a condition to require a more sturdy tree protection mechanism. In the construction industry, that they usually have fencing or temporary fencing around the drip lamp trees, not just a trunk, so that, my understanding on a tree person is that when you, when you have canopy, that's your drip system. And once you get into your drip system substantially, then a tree will be impacted, if you will. So normally, we could entertain an extra condition, such as that in the condition, and also we can follow up in the building permit.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
On that topic, I know that we do end up, I mean, regularly with lots with heritage trees on them, and, and when they don't meet the requirement for specific, if the construction is not within a certain distance of the tree, there's not a requirement for specific protection. And while I absolutely would want to see the tree be protect, the trees be protected, I don't know if that would be a financial hardship or would be a reasonable request for us to demand. I'm looking, go.
I guess, I guess I can amend my question to state, because I'm thinking about my own, just my own experience, where the tree that was damaged was not right next to the house. But the construction folks decided to, when they excavated the foundation, they put the dirt pile over there next to it. So that, I guess, that makes that part of the construction zone there. So as long as all construction activities are well away from the trees, then protection would likely not be.[1799.78] would likely not be needed. But how do you enforce that or make sure that that happens? That's the only thing I'm concerned with, just because they're heritage trees.
Yeah, through the chair, if I may. So I'm looking at the plans, Plan A dash two. The trees are a couple of feet from the proposed addition, and I could definitely see Commissioner Hamilton's concern that, you know, because a couple of feet are looking at a very close distance. So what we can do is we could also minimize the financial burn on the applicant's part is to just provide a temporary screening of that tree for purely tree protection reason. And staff will work with, I think Public Works and Non-Community Services, they have standard language for that during the construction, so we're not overburdening, overburdening the applicant for doing something that's temporary in nature.
Sure. That sounds good.
That's agreeable to me.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other commission?
Just through the chair, I went around there on Sunday, and there is indeed plenty of parking for two cars in front. It's a good deep driveway. And I think, you know, I think the plans make sense. I think it'll make a good addition to the house.
Thank you. Any other questions or points of discussion? No? I'll just mention, which is more of a, let's see. I'm going to, I'm going to ask to look over your shoulder at condition of approval number seven.
You referring to the designated garage one?
Oh, I was in the findings, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm finding, I'm sorry, yes. Finding number seven refers to a designated, designated garage use, and it seems that that's not applicable to this. Do we just keep that verbiage in there because?
Yeah, it's a standard condition, but we can remove it if it is not, yeah.
Well, you eliminate our condition. Sorry, that was my oversight.
Oh, okay. That's okay. I just, I don't know if it would normally be removed or if it's kept in there for future purposes as an agreement with the city.
Since they don't have a garage, we'll remove it for clarity.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then I'm going to ask you to look at, well, actually, you don't need to look at number 25, but number 25, I just wanted to, this, just because I'm a curious mind, requires a sprinkler system in the new areas, and was just curious how that's determined as a requirement.
So if the main house has a fire sprinkler, any addition requires a fire sprinkler. That is the first, and the second one is also depend, dependent upon the pressure, the water pressure in that area, and the fire department reviews that when we send this project to them, and they determine whether it is required or not.
Oh, I see. Okay. And then, thank you. And then one last question about the fire department is, there's a requirement for a horn and strobe visible from the street, and I'm just, I'm not familiar with that, and I was wondering if you could educate me.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know.
I think it's for ADA compliant reason, for the, so this is for the visual, audible impaired people that they can see or the other way around. So I'm not explaining this perfectly, but I see you not heading, head nodding, so hopefully you get the message across. So this is a audible and visible device so that if you are somehow hearing impaired or visually impaired, this device will help you to, let you know that there is an emergency in your house.
And this is within the house, not outside of the house?
It is outside, and I think it, I'm not very sure, but it blinks and it has a light, so that's how a person with any kind, who needs to, can understand whether there is a fire alarm or not, but.
I believe it's to identify the house for the fire department so they get there quickly.
And I would say, I could also volunteer. When I was a kid, we had a fire that started in our house while people were in the backyard, and so, you know, things that alert you from outside are useful.
Very good. I was just, I was just curious because this is not familiar to me in my neighborhood. I haven't seen any of these devices, so.
Yeah, this is a new requirement that we are getting from the fire department. I think it is an update, that's what I heard, last, so.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. If there are not any other questions or points of discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I haven't made the motion.
Oh, you haven't? That's right.
I said I would make one.
You have to say the words, that's right.
Exactly. I would like to make a motion that we accept the staff recommendation to approve use permit 19 dash dash zero one two, basing, based on findings one through six and on condition of approval one through 28, but with the exception of condition number seven, which should be removed.
Okay. Now, do we have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, staff wanted to.
Did you want to include the tree protection?
Oh, I'm sorry, of course.
And the addition. I will offer a friendly amendment to the motion to include a request for additional protection of the heritage trees.
Okay.
Take it.
Now we're good.
All right. Now a second?
I have a second.
Okay. And then we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. There is a 10-day appeal period before any action or activity can begin on this project, and any questions can be directed to planning staff. So thank you, and, and good luck on your project. Okay. Thank you.
I did want to just express appreciation that we're taking what was an unlicensed extension and getting it properly brought up to code, but it's just, it's good to see citizens, you know, working to make the properties in our town safe and structurally sound in, you know, earthquake territory.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Can staff, would, Rucha, would you mind fetching Mary Lou?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. When Mary Lou returns, we will move on to 1740 Clermont Drive. Thank you, Mary Lou, for coming back. Okay. So for 1740 Clermont Drive, we're ready for staff report.
The second project for tonight is 1740 Clermont Drive. It's use permit 19 zero two two. It's a request for a conditional use permit to increase the existing gross floor area of the single-family residence by more than 50 percent. The subject lot measures 5,100 square feet and is currently improved with an existing single-family home with a two-car non-conforming garage. The subject property is located on Clermont Drive between Glenview Drive and Sneed Lane. The current home includes three bedrooms and two bathrooms and have 1,534 square feet of gross floor area. The neighborhood that surrounds the subject property shares similar architectural style and it, as it was developed roughly the same time. The ARC, Commissioner Biazadi, Johnson, and Morgan reviewed the project at its December 12, 2019 ARC meeting. The committee forwarded the project to the Planning Commission for approval with a recommendation to have obscur glass for the second-story bedroom window on the east elevation. The applicant has incorporated this recommendation and provided a revised design. The applicant proposes to construct a 1,271 square feet combined first and second-story addition to the existing single-family house. If approved and constructed, the project would add 468 square feet to the first floor and 803 square feet living area to the new second floor, which total, which adds to 2,805 square feet gross floor area. The ground floor addition would add a new family room at the back of the garage, and the new second floor would add three new bedrooms and two bathrooms. The project proposes to utilize materials to match the exterior of the existing house, namely composite shingle roofing and wood or cement siding and stucco exterior finish to match the existing material and color. The project requires a conditional use permit because it proposes expansion, which is more than 50 percent of the existing floor area, and the use permit process helps analyze the addition, if it would be in keeping with the scale and design of the neighborhood. The proposed first floor addition would be located in the rear of the garage and, which is the rear of the existing property, and therefore would not be visible from, as seen from the street, which, which moves the massing away from, the first floor massing away from the house. The second-story addition is a step back four feet from the face of the front of the house. The second-story addition is also stepped back approximately 25 feet from the east side, which helps to provide articulation and also minimizes any privacy concerns from east side of the, of the subject property. The second story on the west side has, has a full, full-size window, which we provided recommendation to have obscur glass, which they have provided. The new height is proposed to be 20 feet six inches, which is permissible, where the permissible height is 28 feet. Overall, the proposed second story and the first story addition is in, in keeping with the neighborhood scale as there are other existing two-story houses in the neighborhood. Overall, the proposed first and second story addition complies with the basic design principles outlined in the San Bruno Residential Design Guidelines as it reinforces the prevailing neighborhood patterns, and it also meets the daylight plain requirement, which is a requirement for the second-story additions. In regards to the existing landscaping, there is, there are minimal changes proposed where the existing holy bushes and the Japanese maple tree will be maintained. The proposal otherwise meets all the permeable and impermeable area requirements per the San Bruno Municipal Code. Overall, staff is support, is in support of this project and recommends Planning Commission to approve use permit 19 zero two two, based on findings one through six and conditions of approval one through 30. This concludes my staff presentation and happy to answer any questions. The applicant and the architect and the owner both are here tonight with us to answer any questions from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for staff? Okay. Right, in that case.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were, it, it doesn't impact the decision in any way at all, it's just a question from one part of the report. It mentions that this is in the Crestmore seven subdivision, and I thought we only had three Crestmores. Is there a different numbering system that I'm not aware of? Or is, or does, I know there's Crestmore one, two, and three. I live in three, and I thought that where this house was, was Crestmore two. Is there a different numbering system?
Yeah, there is. I will check the subdivision map and confirm that again.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Doesn't affect anything that we're going to talk about tonight. Thank you.
Okay. I do have a question for staff. I know we see routinely requests for landscape plan, and I'm trying to recall, was there a detailed landscape plan with drip and?
Yes, there is a preliminary landscaping plan with this application.
And, and it does meet the city requirements? Wonderful. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for staff? Okay.
No.
Thank you. Okay, well, in that case, we will go ahead and ask the applicant to come and tell us a little bit about your project.
So, good evening. First of all, thank you all for your service to our community. So I moved into San Bruno about six years ago. It was just my wife and I in our home, so the house was perfect. We ended up getting two girls, so space became a very big issue really fast. So there are four and six right now, so it's manageable at the moment, but I can already foresee that we're going to need a lot more space, and adding the extra rooms, having all the living quarters upstairs is going to help a lot. That'll give us a nice big guest room for grandma for the backup, so it's purely based on building a family. That's the main purpose of it.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Thank you for sharing. Okay. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment on this item? No? Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring the discussion back to the commission. Are there any questions or points of discussion?
I just have a comment. This is, this is a great-looking addition, made for great reasons, and I'm going to recommend it.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
No.
He didn't say all the numbers.
I can make one.
Or I can.
Yeah, you go for it.
I would, I would like to move that we, oh, am I looking at the right, yeah, approve use permit 19 dash oh two two, based on findings one to six and conditions of approval one to 30.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that sounds good. The motion is passed. You have a 10-day appeal period before any action or activity can begin on the project, and any questions that you have, you can direct towards staff. But thank you and, and good luck, and congratulations on your family. We're, we are the same in my house. We are very tight. Yeah, so it'll be wonderful. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So let's see. We are going to go ahead and move on from our agenda items into items from staff.
Yes. But before that, I was looking at the Crestmore seven for Commissioner Hamilton, which I'll share after our meeting.
Sure.
But so far, I've only found Crestmore, Crestmore six A, so I'll continue to look for seven.
I didn't know we had more than three. Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a citywide subdivision map, so we'll share afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the first item is that we have offered to send commissioners to the Sonoma State Training Opportunity that will happen next Saturday, and Commissioner Harmon has signed up. He's looking for a friend, a buddy to go with him, if anyone's interested.
Actually, I haven't booked a room yet, but my plan is, it starts quite early up in Sonoma, and my plan is to go up the night before and stay somewhere, so if there is another commissioner interested, I would be happy to split a room.
Yeah. And let, let me know if you're interested, and we'll take care of the registration for you. I hope Commissioner Harmon has received your ticket for today.
Yep, yep.
Okay. But it is a Saturday and right before Super Bowl, so I don't fault you for not wanting to go.
That's that thing where, like, there's a whole bunch of ads, and then something else happens when you go to the bathroom and get snacks?
That one.
That's the one.
Yeah.
The second item I would like to bring to your attention, which is not on the agenda, is I'm looking for the three volunteers for February Architectural and Review Committee.
I'm available.
Thank you.
What was the date again, Pamela?
It will be February, let's see, 13, right before Valentine's Day.
I'm available.
Okay, I got three. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm available as well.
Okay. And we will finalize the project, and if there's any conflict, we'll notify the commissioners immediately. Okay. All right. I have one more item. So next month in Planning Commission meeting, I will be bringing the recent housing law update that's prompted by the state. I don't know if you have heard, last October, to be exact, October 9th, Governor Nusant signed about 200-plus housing laws into effect. They include a variety of different topics, ADUs, density bonus, fee transparency, permit process streamlining, it goes on and on, and rental protection. So what I'll be doing is I'll be providing a presentation for the commission to understand how that impacts the city and how that impacts the development in the city. You've touched upon some, SB 35 was something in the past. Something just got signed not too long ago is the SB 50. We also had in the mix SB 330. There are so many legislation that got into effect that will changing, that will change how local jurisdiction have authority or regulatory control over housing development in particular. So I just kind of want to give you a preview, and most of them are driven by a state law update. So that leaves really the local jurisdiction, like Chair put it very nicely, our hands are tied in a lot of things. So this will be coming back to you in February.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you also for keeping good training opportunities available to us. And thank you also for keeping good training opportunities available to us. It's, it's really helpful and a lot of them are really relevant and really useful for us.
And I'll keep continuing to kind of passing them on and I understand the, some of them might be a little outed area and if I see any available webinar, I'll definitely pass those on and any training, any APA offered, those kind of things, I'll also pass it on as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So if staff is finished, we can move on to our second public comment. If there's anybody from the public, okay, if there's nobody from the public who'd like to share. So we will bring it back to the commission for any members or subcommittee reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I have a question. There is, this is just on one of the conditions of approval that I think appears, it appeared in both things this, this month and it might, it might be in all of them. And that's the FAA requirement. And it just seemed odd, especially given that one of the properties being approved did not change in height. Is it because of our proximity to the airport that the FAA wants to look at everything that we're looking at or what, is there, is there a certain threshold that must be met before that triggers it? Because it seems like just one more thing, because I noticed, I noticed that it said that there's another form you can go fill out at the city to, to get away from that or to, to absolve from that, but it just seems like another, yet another step for that our residents have to go through for little benefit.
Yeah, that is because, that is because of the proximity with the airport. It's a formality that all projects have to fill in that form.
That's just really strange. I mean, I understand you're putting up a hotel next to Tanforan where, where the plans are going overhead. That makes sense, but.
You know what? We will follow up and look to see the legitimacy. I definitely see if they're not changing height or they are nowhere close to the limitation or revisit that again.
Is it anything to do with the noise?
Does that have to do with the noise?
It is with the noise, yeah.
Okay. So it's more of a disclaimer to say that you're within the airport noise contour, therefore.
Oh, so it's more, it's more, you're really, it's not a, it's not that the FAA is looking to approve anything.
No, no.
It's their, they want to make sure that, hey, remember there's an airport over here, so don't complain.
Right, so you would need to do double pane, triple pane windows so to reduce your noise. So it's not an approval, but more of a disclaimer for a property owner to understand that they're under this noise contour.
Acknowledging where they are and that they're.
But we definitely will look into it. I mean, like I said, if, if there's a height issue or whatnot.
But it is an exemption form, so they are all exempted from it because it's a residential, you have a single-family house, so.
We'll, we'll look at it and bring it back next month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other reports? I have, I have a couple of things I'd like to share and the first thing I'd like to acknowledge is our Commissioner, Mary Lou Johnson, and she is celebrating her 30th year of service as a planning commissioner and, which is an incredible gift to our city. And I wanted to thank you for what you've done for our city and also for the experience that you've shared with your fellow commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Thank you. You were, you were well-recognized at last Tuesday's council meeting, if I may add that. Yeah. So I witnessed myself.
There were mutters and gasps in the audience.
I wish I'd been in the area, I was out of town.
You can watch it on YouTube again.
Okay.
Your ears must be on red.
In the casino. Thank you very much. That's very, very thoughtful.
Thank you, Mary. Mary Lou, I'm sorry. I would also like to share that last week, last week, I delivered the annual report to City Council for the planning commission on the 14th. And with Pamela's help, we had a great report and we listed our commissioners, we introduced Pamela, we reviewed all of the significant work that we have done in 2019, and then we gave a forward snapshot of the different projects that are coming before planning commission and sometimes to City Council in the coming year or two. And it was, it was great and I have a copy of the slides and I'm sure that Pamela could also send a copy if you're interested in seeing.
I will.
Okay.
It was very, very well done.
You can also watch it on YouTube.
It was a very good presentation. Thank you. And very well presented.
Yep, best job.
Thank you. Thank you. And City Council specifically asked me to thank you, all of you, for your service and for the time that you spend doing what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay. So if there's nothing else from our commission, then I get to use the gavel again. It is, thank you, 7:55 and our meeting is adjourned.